Our agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting, June 27 of '23, copies of which are in the packets. Any corrections needed for the minutes that anyone has noted? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion from Watson, second from Denny. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. The minutes are approved. Item number two is discussion of possible action regarding acceptance of Public Health Vending Machine Program award for $80,000. You'll see you've got some information in your packets. The police department has been awarded a grant from the opioid settlement funds to acquire these two machines to combat overdoses, it sounds like. So we've got the write-up in the packets from the department. Does anyone have any questions for the chief at all about this? This would just authorize them to accept the grant. Is there a motion then to approve? Motion by Denny, second by Lukens. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries. Item number three is discussion of possible action regarding ARPA funding requests and related budget modification. Let me switch to my meeting packet here. And it looks like the one that we have is water and sewer broadband infrastructure that they want scored. And that request comes from Randy. Did you want to walk us through that request, Randy?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Sure.
So what we have in front of us today is associated with the 700 grand. There was an RFP put out for affordable housing project on that site last year. As part of that process and working through kind of due diligence and getting everything out there, realize that there is a storm sewer as well as a water main that runs through a section of that property. So as part of the development of that property, we'll need to reroute that infrastructure through there. Working with engineering, they proposed two different alternatives to get that done. Ideally, we'd be more of a time crunch for this, but for whatever reason, with the low-income tax credits, Commonwealth was not awarded in this cycle. Kind of believe that that had to do with us having two different applications with the cycle with the Gorman project for West Side Battery as well as this one. In talking with Wida, we're really confident that they'll be awarded tax credits in the next cycle. So what that would do is that would put them on a timeline where they would start construction for the apartment project in early '24. In an effort to get our infrastructure in place prior to them, we're looking at using ARPA funds for this. So there's two different proposals that you'll see in there. There's an Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Part of this is kind of a bigger infrastructure project, even if we weren't doing any development of the 700 grand. You'll see within the one exhibit that there's an existing storm sewer that actually is was constructed in 1914 that actually runs through some residential lots to the east of there. So that's a little bit more expensive, but we're looking at solving a bigger problem in that area. And then Exhibit B is a smaller alternative. That would just be more site-specific where we wouldn't be addressing that bigger issue. But really, the idea is getting this work done in 2023 so the development is ready to go in 2024 when it's awarded. One other consideration as part of this, as we don't just be putting money into something, with timing, everything, we would ensure that their low-income tax credits were awarded prior to actually starting the project and doing the award. So just want to make sure that that's out there. But happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Michael.
Okay. When you say that Option A solves a bigger problem in the area, does that bigger problem include the sinking of the road along that corner there of Grand and Thomas Street on the east side, right at the stoplight? That thing every year or so that has to be rebuilt?
Yeah. So that's my understanding that it has to do with, if you look in Exhibit A and what they're showing there, part of that infrastructure that comes across. And I understand, and I don't have the complete history on it, but there used to be a house or a building on that corner that was razed due to that issue of that continual sinking.
Okay.
And this would solve that?
Yep. It's going to relocate that existing sewer that currently runs through there.
Okay.
Sarah. So I didn't see the time, like the calendar and the expenditure of funds. It will be, you know, paid out by the time the deadline's needed, even if we wait for the to make sure they get the low-income tax credits?
Yep. So credits should come out sometime in early in '24. So and we just need to have everything allocated by the end of '24. So and even if the project would take place in '24 would be the goal. So we would have time to bid it out after we knew that the project was actually going forward.
So definitely done before?
Before we meet the spend-down deadline.
Okay.
Okay. That makes some sense. Carol.
Thank you. Just so that I understand the previous discussion correctly, so the sinking is due to the storm sewer, the sinking on the east side of Grand Ave, or it is not?
That's my understanding in talking with both Eric and Alan, that infrastructure and everything, it's all part of the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just an interesting issue and just goes back and kind of shows the history of everything and how at one point that infrastructure was just running through residential lots and outside the right-of-way. If you look at the bigger history of how everything was developed around that area and the railroad tracks, it's pretty interesting.
I'm sure. Sarah.
So we would be ranking the larger Exhibit A and not thinking about the Exhibit B?
I guess that would be my initial request.
So, I mean, the project merits are kind of the same either way. So if we score it on the merits of the value, we could decide how much money to put to it if you decide you wanted to move it forward after we get the scores in. So we would score it for our next meeting, which is at the end of this month, and then we'd make a decision as to whether or not to move it forward, and then if so, at what amount, I think is, you know?
I guess my concern is there's like, I mean, it's about $220,000 difference, and I don't know if we earmark it for something, what else will be for, you know, might we pass by?
Right. Because we do have some other projects that we've put a pin in waiting, you know, and at some point before we get to the spend-down deadline, we'll have to pick that list back up again and see if we wanted to grab anything off that list as well. And?
Because if we did, you know, approve the project based on the $1 million, how much extra? Like, do you know how much left?
I think there's about $1.4 million left. I'll send that in the next packet.
Okay.
With the ranking forms.
Yeah. We are just about out of funding. So this would pretty much use the rest of it. I mean, even at this lower amount, it still uses such a substantial amount that, you know, whatever's left on the list would have to be just small stuff. So.
I think the other thing is, you know, when, if they do get their tax credits, is this falls outside of a tax increment district and, you know, we're relying on ARPA money from the feds or the state to help us fund the other project?
The West Side Battery project. So if you remember back for that West Side Battery project, we were awarded through the Neighborhood Investment Fund grant.
Yeah.
Funds for that project specifically. So these affordable housing projects, low-income housing projects, are extremely difficult to put together the capital stack on. There's so many things that have to come together to make it happen. So anytime we have an opportunity like this to use the ARPA funds for it and not utilize general fund or tax increment district money, it's beneficial. The problem with using TIF money on a project like this is you're not getting that full value like we would for a market rate project. It's a reduced rate. So it doesn't make sense to be trying to get back the payback on that. It just doesn't exist.
Right. Because the projects like that, while they're valuable, they need and use the same amount of services as any other project.
Absolutely.
But they pay property tax at a rate that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30%. So your return on investment is not only slower, in some cases, it's non-existent. So I guess anytime we could stay away from TID on one of those, we try to. Sarah and then Carol.
So funding of this project, if it wasn't using ARPA funds, would be just general fund?
Yes.
Okay. So that would?
Levy borrowing.
Right. Or we, I mean, we had talked and I, there was a sort of a question, I think, that Tom Killian had asked during the meetings for the modification to TID 12 is, you know, this fell within the half-mile boundary. Were we going to add that as a project cost? And it's not in the current plan. So, you know, you could add it. That could be one of the sources of funds. The problem with TID 12 is it doesn't have any money. So, you know, when you look at districts, if you do have a low-income project in a district that is getting extra increment from a different project, then you can use that to help defray your public costs on the low-income housing. Unfortunately, TID 12 right now is the mall district and it, you know, it doesn't have...
It's so new, there's nothing there yet.
Right. There's no development to help.
Yeah.
So.
I guess I had a quick follow-up too. Because I know like when you are close to closing a TID, right, you can extend it to use for affordable housing. Does that also work for using it for infrastructure or that actually is creating the?
I think you could use it for infrastructure because it would be, you know, related, supporting that low-income housing project. We do have an issue from a timing perspective because that increment, that one-year increment isn't going to be available in 2024. So that is a timing problem that we have with this project.
So the only profitable TIDs aren't closing?
Right.
Early enough?
Right.
To help us out?
Right. I mean, you could explore amending, and I can't remember if TID 3 is within the half-mile boundary of this. I don't think it is. We had looked at maybe amending the boundaries of TID 8 to follow along the park, Riverside Park, because it's, you know, on the west side, because it's where that West Side low-income housing project, because that would be zero value. So we would still be able to add that to a TIF, which would get us close to the half-mile boundary. So that would be another option that we could explore if you wanted to.
Okay.
Because that district does have, you know, some increment sharing capability. Yep. For this project would.
Doug. Oh, wait. Carol and then Doug, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Since this would not be until after you find out if they would get that credit, because I'm still new, would there be any possibility if there were like any surplus, if there was any surplus up over at the end of this year, is that not really?
Oh, at the end of 2023?
Yeah.
To either help fund the project or?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you could, you know, try to squeeze some of this project in the capital budget. When we were looking at, you know, the street projects, because typically, you know, we fund out of cash some of our smaller projects, and then the streets are really funded with debt. And those projects really don't, didn't give us much room to try to incorporate this project in there, because you would be choosing then to delay a street project.
Okay. Doug.
Thank you. Two questions. First, related to the mechanics here of the replacing this pipe structure. Does it affect any of the new street concrete in on that corner or on Thomas Street that we not so long ago rebuilt?
I can't answer. That'd be a question for Eric and Alan. I know they've been talking about, you know, this is part of a bigger project, so.
Because I would assume we looked at this when we redid that piece of Thomas Street.
Eric's here.
Yeah.
Keep talking about that section on East Thomas Street, right? East of the lights there where we repaved that?
Okay, so it's on the other side of the road.
Yeah. We will be tearing some of that up for sure. Yeah. But that was an overlay. It was, it's something that we did in-house. We did look at that storm sewer at the time, but, you know, there was no reason, we didn't have issues with it, so there was no reason for us to consider moving it at that time. Yeah.
So these are new issues. Second question would be related to the original RFP. Thank you. So we ranked and we selected Commonwealth based on various factors. Not all of these proposals necessarily required that type of digging in that area and that structure for either underground or other types of parking. So how do we go back and justify to the other bidders that potentially could have won this had this been known back then?
I think in any scenario, we would be relocating the water for certain on this because we wouldn't want a water main running underneath a building. So I think that whatever project was moved forward, we would be dealing with the same issues.
So you're comfortable that everybody that bid was on fair ground at the time it was bid?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The water sewer, the water main issue would need to be relocated, whether we're doing underground parking or just ground, you know, they were just building, they wouldn't really be building slab-on-grade, but, you know, similar to that, surface-level parking.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, then, we don't have to vote on these per se. We would just rank and score them for our next meeting, which will, Mary Ann will email out a electronic score sheet that we can try to get in, probably one of them for Friday before the meeting, right?
Sure.
So we'll shoot for that. And that's all we would have then on that agenda item until we get done with our scoring. Item number four is discussion of possible action regarding budget modification for the purchase of a transit snowplow and minivan. So on your desks, you've got an updated document from Mary Ann that fills in the costs on this. And we do have the Transit Director with us this evening. If you have questions for Matthew on this, it looks like these two items, they have been wanting to purchase, but the cost of them keeps rising exponentially like everything else. So come on up, Matthew, and talk to us about these two items.
Good afternoon. So we have tried once before to solicit bids for both of these vehicles. We received no responses. This time, we solicited bids for a minivan and a snowplow service truck. We received two bids for the snowplow service truck and no bids for the minivan. I personally reached out to, I want to say, 30 dealerships across the state trying to encourage them to bid. And these prices were calculated before the pandemic. This is with fiscal year 2020 federal formula operating funds. So unfortunately, the prices of heavy trucks have really increased dramatically since 2020, which is where this discrepancy is coming from. The vehicle this is replacing is a 1997 Ford F-450 Super Duty that is being sold as scrap because the frame is unsafe, the brakes don't work, the vehicle is completely deteriorated, and we need a replacement. We use the service truck and the snowplow to remove snow from both our garage facility as well as the transit center on Jefferson Street. It also can be used to tow buses when they break down, you know, very short distances and provide, you know, service needs for our both stops, facilities, and vehicles, help with road calls when a vehicle breaks down, things like that. So it's kind of an all-purpose, heavy-duty truck that we need to add to our fleet or, you know, replace a vehicle that's no longer in the fleet.
Sure. Okay. Does anyone have questions about that item? Go ahead, Doug.
So are we not considering the minivan at this point?
The minivan will not be considered at this point. I want to wait till we get some bids back and then approach with a budget modification for the difference between what's budgeted for that project and the bids received.
Will it fall under the same grant piece?
Yes, it will. It's under the same, it's under the same federal 5307 formula grant allocation, but they're separate projects as far as the Federal Transit Administration's concerned.
Okay. So just the truck at this point, the plow truck at this point, the figures that we have as far as the fiscal impact show that at $70,032.26. Is that both, is that funding both pieces or is that just the truck? It looks like that's?
That's just the truck.
That is just the truck? Okay. All right. And so that would be our local share. Anyone else have questions about that item? Go ahead.
Sorry, one more.
Sure.
Does that include the plow and the ancillary equipment or is it just the truck frame?
It includes a truck chassis, which would be a Ford F-550 chassis. The snowplow that will meet our needs as well as salter and some of the, you know, the salt body, which is the dump that goes on the chassis, and then some of the rear equipment, like an ICC bumper so that the vehicle can tow a down bus or something like that. So yes, it's a full kit, fully suitable. From the day it's delivered, it'll be ready to go with no additional modifications needed.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable to me.
All right. Sure. Do we have a motion then to approve that item?
I have a motion to approve the?
Okay. Motion from Denny to approve the plow truck, second by Martins. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries. Item five is discussion of possible action regarding transit facility study, local funding commitment. And so you have a memo in your packets from Matthew about that as well. Does anyone have questions on that particular item? Anything that you want to walk us through on that item? Matthew.
Sure. So this is just the local share for a potential 5304 statewide transplanting transportation grant. Essentially, you know, we applied to have some buses replaced with federal funding, and we applied for conventional diesel to replace a conventional diesel. We were not successful in looking at the 1,300 buses across the country that the federal government funded to replace. Out of those 1,300, only two were large, heavy diesel buses that were conventional diesels there. The feds have kind of sent a message that if you would like federal funding to replace a vehicle, you need to come with an application for a hybrid or better. And I think in the future, it's probably going to be, the standard is going to be battery electric. The facility we have, which was built in 1979, has a lot of needs that would make it very difficult to support battery electric and, you know, even complications for hybrids. So what this study should do, if we win it from, it's a competitive grant application through the State Department of Transportation, but if we are awarded the funds, it would help us look at a lot of these factors, like the suitability of the electricity grid in the area to support battery charging, the fact that our facility is in a floodplain, how that might impact it, whether the facility itself could be retrofitted, or whether we would be looking at having to essentially, you know, relocate. So I think, you know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert. I think we really need to get some experts in to get us started on what's feasible and what isn't as far as our future facility needs.
Sure. And so our portion of that looks like $20,000?
Maximum, yes.
Maximum. Does anybody else have any questions for Matthew on that then? That would at least get us started to find out what it would take. Is there a motion to approve this item? Motion from Lukens, second from Denny. Further discussion? Go ahead, Doug.
Quick question. How, what do you anticipate the timeline for this study to be done? So we can?
So the application is due at the end of this month. I think then, you know, we would probably take a few months to select the consultant, bring them on board, and the consultants would probably have varying timelines for what they need to do. But this is not a very intensive study. So, you know, I would hope that within a year of award to a consultant, we would have a finished product. I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So in the meantime, do we have other contingencies? And I guess maybe we are talking about some of the used product out there.
Yep. We have, at the city council meeting, we'll be talking about some of the used buses. But in the meantime, we have received last summer some Volkswagen buses with the Volkswagen settlement money, that those really helped with getting some of the really old vehicles out of our fleet. So that means for the, you know, the big buses, we essentially have three families. We have that family of 2022s. We have a family of 2012 buses, which are beginning to show their age. We have a family of 2009s, which are the ones I'm most concerned about. The four 20-year-old buses that were really bad, we're getting off the property right now. So we are just going to have to try to invest in trying to keep those vehicles running reliably and, you know, instead of duct-taping a hose, replacing the hose, and trying to be very wise with repairs, understanding that the service life of a bus is 12 years, and we're going to have to push it to 15, 16, 17 years, which is doable, but it requires some forethought in how you respond to the failures that the vehicle has and how you choose to repair them.
Sure. Okay. So with that, go ahead. Oh.
Oh, I'm waiting for the vote.
You're good? Okay. So we have, he's ready. We have a motion and a second on the floor then. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries. Item number six is discussion of possible action on authorizing application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for Wisconsin Assessment Monies Program to, looks like survey and test properties along the Thomas Street corridor that we have proposed for some redevelopment. And you've got a memo from Liz in your packets that outlines the redevelopment effort that we wanted to take into account on some of the vacant parcels that still remain along Thomas Street. But there is some funding available to do some testing there, and there's been some environmental limitations to developing those properties. And when we first started talking about properties in that area, it was to make sure that none of them have basements and that they're all constructed on slabs and things like that. And it sounds like here there's some testing money available to maybe go a step further and even discover what actually is in there if there's anything wrong with the site. So does anybody have questions on this at all? And this really is just approving her grant application? If not, go ahead, Doug.
I'll give a quick question here.
Sure.
You know, due to the nature of what we've dealt with over the years on Thomas Street, I'm hoping that we engage the citizens so they realize what's going on there. And we have a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, I think is what I read in there. And that citizens are engaged so that, you know, there aren't some surprises that we'll have to circle back on. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the grant application? Motion by Watson, second by Lukens. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, so that motion carries. That concludes our agenda for today. We'll have a little gap between now and the council meeting at 6:30, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion from Watson, is there a second? Second by Denny, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's ever opposed. We'll stand adjourned then, and council will start in this chamber at 6:30. Thanks, everyone.